Sutter County Board of Supervisors.
UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Stevens?
Here.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, and I think Supervisor Boone is on his way back with a new fire truck or something. Is that correct? Something? We'll talk about that later. Okay. Well, everyone, please rise and join us. First, we will have an invocation by our very own Supervisor Stevens, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which led today by Ken Sra, if you would lead us.
Would you please bow your head? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunities to serve our community, grant us wisdom in our decisions, clarity in our discussions, and compassion in our actions. May we lead with humility, seek justice, and promote the common good. Bless our county, its people, and those who work each day to make it stronger. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Ken?
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken, and everybody may be seated. Except the supervisor.
Will Rick Bingham and Health and Human Services staff please join the board to receive a proclamation recognizing September 7th through the 13th, 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Month, and September 10th, 2025 as World Suicide Prevention Day?
Test, test. All right. Okay, National Suicide Prevention, September 7th through the 13th. National Suicide Prevention Week is a time in which individuals, organizations, and communities around the country join their voices to augment the message that suicide can be prevented. It is recognized that people of all ages benefit from access to effective behavioral health care and a sense of meaning and purpose. Attitudes and perceptions about behavioral health challenges and suicide have a significant impact on individual wellness and the willingness to reach out for support and services that can alleviate distress. Cultivating and maintaining behavioral health wellness is a lifelong pursuit, and individuals can benefit from integrating behavioral health wellness into their daily routine to prevent or reduce the severity of behavioral health conditions. Knowing the signs of suicide, talking with someone that may be thinking of suicide, and reaching out to local resources are steps everyone can take to care for themselves and for others. All Californians are urged to play a role in suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness as we strive towards zero suicides. September 7th through the 13th, 2025, is recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Week, providing the opportunity to educate and engage everyone in our community to find their role in suicide prevention. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the week of September 7th through the 13th, 2025, as Suicide Prevention Week, and the day of September 10th, 2025, as World Suicide Prevention Day. With that, I'm going to hand you the microphone. Okay?
Thank you. I appreciate the board recognizing Suicide Prevention and Awareness Week. It's obviously a very important event for behavioral health and for our community. And with that, I just want to talk a little bit about what we can do as a community. Firstly, what we want to do is recognize when individuals have symptoms or thoughts of suicide, and then respond with compassion and care, and then refer to a competent professional. So those are known as the three Rs. And so if you recognize, respond, and refer, then that will be helpful to those who may be struggling with thoughts of suicide. And then I also want to take this opportunity to talk about Bridging Hope. So Bridging Hope is our third annual Suicide Prevention and Awareness Walk that we do. That will be on September 20th, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Registration starts at 8:00 a.m., and that is at the Uba County Government Center. And what we do is we walk from the Government Center across 10th Street Bridge, and then down the levee, back on 5th Street Bridge, and back to the Government Center. It's about a two-mile walk, and we have other activities and supports there. And so again, it is an opportunity to raise awareness for suicide in our community. And with that, I want to thank the board.
Thank you, Rick. Let's give him a round of applause. Appreciate you. Okay. Did anyone else want to say anything? No? Okay. Then let's stand for the photo. Awesome. Yes, I know, the chin. Thank you. Appreciate it. And several of us will be joining you at the walk this Saturday, so look forward to seeing you.
Sorry. Will Zach Hamel and Emergency Services Staff please join the board to receive a proclamation recognizing September 2025 as National Preparedness Month?
Zach again?
There he is. Hey, Zach. Zach is one of our local stars. He's been up here a couple of times. National Preparedness Month. National Preparedness Month is a nationwide effort held each September to highlight the importance of emergency preparedness. This year's theme is Preparedness Starts at Home, and that emphasizes taking essential preparedness steps within the home, such as making a family emergency plan, building a disaster kit, knowing your specific risk, and engaging in low-cost and no-cost preparedness measures to become more resilient in the event of an emergency. Sutter County is committed to making preparedness education a priority and bring together members of the community and government leaders to actively participate in emergency preparedness planning, mitigation, response, and recovery. Multiple resources are available to citizens to help ensure preparedness, including online tools. BePreparedSutter.org provides information to the community on the hazards of Sutter County, tips on personal preparedness, and steps to take before, during, and after disasters. Code Red allows people to sign up for notifications of disasters in their area. Zone Haven provides a visual representation where residents can learn about evacuations and know what zone they live in, work, learn, and play in. Ready.gov, a national campaign designed to educate and empower Americans to prepare for and respond to emergencies, including natural and man-made disasters. Personal preparedness and planning in advance are critical to an effective response to a disaster. It is vital that all community members take steps to prepare for emergencies at home, work, or school. The Board of Supervisors of Sutter County hereby proclaim the month of September 25th as National Preparedness Month in Sutter County and call upon the people of Sutter County to support efforts in their community to ensure residents are prepared for unforeseen disasters. You know, that's incredible, the number of resources. Just even trying to maintain those and keep them going is really quite a feat, and you guys do that really amazingly well. So I just want to say thank you for that, and then I'm going to hand you the microphone so you can tell us more about this important month.
Thank you. Thank you to the board and the county for this recognition. Like this month's campaign, it, preparedness does start at home. So having that kit, building that plan, and being informed about where to get information and how to get information is critical. So going to bepreparedsutter.org to sign up for Code Red and learn about where you live is critical to being prepared, and I would be remiss if I didn't say that the core of emergency management and preparedness is Scott, Leann, and Kathy. So our staff is incredible when it comes to being prepared. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Will Sonia Pimentel, President of the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement, please join the board to receive a proclamation recognizing September 15th through October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month?
She's telling us she's just this little compared to us, but she's small but mighty, is what I say, right? So thank you for joining us today, Sonia. And it's my honor to read to you about Alliance for Hispanic Advancement Month. Each year, Hispanic Heritage Month is observed in the United States from September 15th through October 15th. What began as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson and expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th. The day of September 15th is significant because it's the anniversary of the start of Independence Day for Latin American countries. Mexico, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua all finally became independent from Spain in 1821. During Hispanic Heritage Month, it is important to create awareness of the contributions that people of Hispanic heritage make in our community and to recognize that Hispanic heritage is an American heritage. In honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, the Sutter County Board of Supervisors recognized the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement and their commitment to their mission of improving the quality of life for all people of Hispanic heritage in Sutter and the surrounding counties. The Alliance for Hispanic Advancement continues to accomplish their mission through community involvement, educational enhancement, and economic promotion. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors does hereby acknowledge the achievements, the milestones, the accomplishments that the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement has and continues to make for the Hispanic population of Sutter County. So I'm going to give you this. Let's give her a round of applause first, and thank you.
First of all, I want to thank the board. Thank you for this recognition. And I don't know if all of you know about the Alliance, but it's AHA for short. We've been around for over 30 years, and it's been a lot of work continuing, but with collaboration, the network, and support, we continue to keep going, and we hope to continue another 30 years, or more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Want to say?
Well, I was talking to Supervisor Flores. What do we have? Three Hispanic supervisors? Yeah.
Is he one? We should mention that Supervisor Baines is the only one who speaks Spanish well up here, though. You're honorary. Okay. That was great. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on now to public comment. And this is where members of the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. So we have consent calendar. Entertain a motion.
To the chair?
Yes.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Ziegemeyer, and today we'll just do a vote. So I'm just going to ask all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, eyes have it. There's no opposition. We'll move on to the next item.
Excuse me, Chair, we do have one public comment.
Oh, we do. I'm sorry.
That's from Tony Farley.
Tony, I didn't mean to skip you, sir, or ma'am. Sorry. Yeah, you're next.
Next. Tony Farley, North Houston, 28 Willow Creek Drive, North Houston, north side of town now, back of a mom's house. So thank you Sheriff Farm for service. Thank you Emergency Management Office of Civil Defense, the former FEMA. Thank you for the exact service. Thank you Colonel Scott, US Marine Corps Colonel at Camp Peloton, San Diego. And also 39, 39, 39, 37 Palms, 29 Palms. Thank you Bill Williams, the present lawyer. Thank you Steve Smith. Hopefully after the meeting, get me some McDonald's, hopefully. Hope so. He's on a meeting. Professor Steve Smith of Harbor Law School, Harbor County School Government. Thank you Karen Baines. Seek in a Hispanic. I like that. And Dan Flores, Hispanic and Native American. And Max Ziegemeyer, of course, Hispanic. And Sarah Rios, dramatic with Hispanic last name. Thank you Battalion Chief, two vehicles and two bagpipes and a fire truck. I like that. Thank you Lord Jamie. Navy veteran. Thank you Veronica Hero, HR. And thank you Neil. And thank you librarian Blondie. And thank you BW guy over there. Thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you, Tony.
Tony, no pie for you this next birthday.
You left out Supervisor Stevens in your... Want another shot at it, or are you good?
Super supervisor Jeff Stevens, the farmer pie plays. Love that.
All right, there you go.
I want the pie next time, okay?
There you go. Now he'll make sure you got the pie. Okay, thank you, Tony. All right, everybody, we all need some comedy. So we're good. All right, we're going to let the vote stand on that, and then we'll move on to the next item, which is actually have to adjourn the Board of Supervisors meeting and reconvene as Water Works Board of Directors. We're going to let the roll call stand as it is. We have a public comment period. Members of the public again will be allowed to address the Water Works District. Number one, Board of Directors and items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. State law provides no action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment? Okay, there being no public comment, we will move on to consent. I'll ask, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Okay, I have a motion from Supervisor Baines, second from Supervisor Stevens, like a half second. I guess that was a second. Okay, we have a second from Supervisor Stevens. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposition or abstention? There being none, the eyes have it, consent carries. We're going to now adjourn Water Works and open up, reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting, and we have an appearance item to start with.
Approval of a memorandum of understanding of general supervisory and professional units for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027. Approval to extend salary increases negotiated with GSP to all employees in the confidential unit, elected department heads, and unrepresented management units, excluding the sheriff, sworn law management, non-sworn law management, and probation management, as they previously received the same increases as those received by employees within their chain of command. Approval to extend all non-salary-related changes negotiated with GSP to employees in the confidential unit, elected department heads, and unrepresented management units. Approval to amend the position allocation schedule to eliminate Account Clerk One and Account Clerk Two job classifications and retitle Account Clerk Three to Account Clerk. Approval to reclassify all Account Clerk One, Two, and Three employees to Account Clerks. Approval of a change to Section 10.4 to the Sutter County rules governing employee compensation, benefits, and working conditions to include the program manager for the Public Guardian Conservator Office and authorization for the chair to sign the attached MOU.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. Veronica Baumgartner, HR Director. As you know, the existing agreement between Sutter County and the Sutter County Employees' Association, which we often refer to as GSP, they represent the General Supervisory and Professional Units, expired this past June 30th, 2025. The county and the association began meeting in March of 2025 and then reached impasse this July 2025. The parties then began participating in mediation with a neutral third party. I'm happy to report that as of August 18th, 2025, a tentative agreement was reached, and the union was able to ratify with its members this tentative agreement on August 26th. So here we are today, and I will just go over and highlight just a few of the items for this two-year agreement. First being a 2% base wage increase effective September 20th, 2025, a 2% base wage increase effective July 11th, 2026, salary adjustments of approximately 5% for a number of hard-to-fill fiscal series classifications totaling right around 40 employees across all different county departments. Beginning in December of 2025 for January 2026, all medical plans other than the high deductible plan will receive the same negotiated county contributions provided to those in an HSA based on whatever tier level, employee-only, employee-plus-one, employee-plus-family. Those amounts will be in addition to the county contribution to premiums. Therefore, all employees, regardless of what plan they choose, will be receiving the same dollar amount from the county. The county also agrees to pay a jail premium pay of 3% of hourly base wage as a special allowance to those in the classifications of custodian, building service worker, food service worker, correctional food service worker, supervisor, and these are people that are just regularly assigned to the jail and have a little bit higher exposure. In addition, staff recommend that the base wage increase negotiated with GSP be extended to all employees in the confidential, elected department head, and unrepresented management, as stated before, excluding certain positions that were already included when their units that they supervise received a raise. Human resource staff studied a cross-section of employee classifications in the confidential and unrepresented management and found that with the proposed 2% increase to classifications, we have classifications that are still up to 27.4% below market when compared to the standard counties. Also, department head classifications were studied in both elected and appointed and are up to 35.6% below market when compared to counterparts in those comparable counties. In 2022, the county, oh, sorry, so that's the provisions of what is being extended. There was also some language changes here that discuss, we had old language like beepers, and we used to call it work-comp clinic. We no longer use work-comp clinic. So there was a lot of language, very minor language changes that we would also like to extend to our management and unrepresented classifications. One other area, in 2022, the county found that a significant number of after-hours standby work was being performed by some of our program manager classifications in the 24/7 facilities within behavioral health. And after additional analysis, it's been determined that our public guardian classification is also required to manage clients 24/7 essentially, as they, one, don't have, they have a small staff, and that staff is not management staff that's working overtime. So there is a request for standby pay for this management, which would make them equivalent to the other clinical program managers that we already have listed in our rules. So a little bit about the fiscal impact. We'll start with the wage increases that we discussed earlier for those in the GSP unit. The general fund cost estimate is $1,042,579, and that's for the two-year term. The cost increase for the unrepresented management, elected department heads, and confidential for the general fund cost for two years is $668,637. Going to the equity adjustments, I only called out one of the equity adjustments for our fiscal classification series. There was another equity adjustment for some of those social workers that are also hard to fill, our adult services, social workers, and our employment and eligibility. The general fund cost for those employees is estimated to be $196,803. The medical adjustment, which will be effective in December 2025, we pay in a month in advance, but for that January 2026 premium is estimated to be an additional $167,000. That's for all units and management that it would be extended to. And it is expected that county departments will absorb these costs within their existing budget amounts for salary and benefits. We have worked closely, you know, and the CAO's office will work closely with their departments to review, and if there is any necessary budget amendments, they will bring those before your board. I want to close by just, you know, thanking, one, thanking the board for all of your guidance throughout this process. I know it's been a long road since we started meeting in March with the association. I also want to thank HR staff who put in a lot of time and crunched a lot of numbers last minute and had to come up with some unique ways to, you know, to compromise, right, with the association as well as the CAO's office. And lastly, the GSP Association that we've been meeting with, that they put a lot of time, and I know they have a lot of passion, and they're trying to listen to a number of, you know, folks in there that they represent. So I want to thank them for their time as well. And I'm open to any questions.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. And I'm going to bring it back for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any? Nope. Okay, no comments from the public. Bring it back to the board for comments. Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
I want to thank everyone that worked on this. I mean, this was a lot of back and forth. You know, this was, it's been a tough few years. And biggest thing, thank you to the GSP for working with us. We really appreciate you. Thank you to everyone involved. Thank you.
Any other supervisors? Any comments? Okay, I just want to say, Veronica, thank you as well. And add to that, I know we've had a lot of discussions, and maybe it doesn't feel like this sometimes, but to the board, we believe the employees are our most important asset, bar none. You know, there's just no doubt about it, and we continue to believe that. And, you know, I hope that the efforts that we put up here reflect that belief, and we're going to continue to offer as much support as we can for employees and raises and benefits for the future, and we look forward to those discussions. And as we improve the economic standing of the county going forward with some important decisions that will have to be made in the next several months, but those decisions could have a critical impact on the future of the county and all of our futures as employees of the county as well. But thank you again for all the work put into it. With that, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Baines, and a second by, sorry, was that, oh, yeah, okay, Supervisor Stevens, and we'll do a roll call vote here, please.
Supervisor Flores?
Yes.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer? Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Great. Yes as in eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you again.
Adoption of the fiscal year 2025 to 26 budget resolution and associated adjustments to the tentatively approved budget as set forth and attachment aid to the resolution.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors, Steve Smith, County Administrator. I'll keep this short because, as you are aware, and most county employers, employees are aware, we've addressed the 2526 budget in multiple ways over the past several months. So we first had a budget study session on April 29th. We had the recommended budget posted online on June 6th, which was presented to the board at the regular meeting on June 10th. And then the recommended budget was tentatively approved by the board on June 24th for operations into the new fiscal year. And then budget hearings were held at the August 19th budget hearing special meeting. at the August 19th budget hearing special meeting. So this was just one more chance for any members of the public or supervisors to ask any questions. However, again, this is, I think, the fifth or sixth time. We'll be back one more time likely once the books are closed and final fund balances are recognized and adjusted for recommendations made to the board for those final adjustments so that the auditor controller can submit the budget timely to the state comptroller's office on December 1st. Happy to answer any questions, and staff are available as well.
Okay, I think, thank you, CAO Smith. And let's see if there's any public comment? None? Okay. Did you have any further comments, Laura? None? Okay. I'll bring it back to the board for any questions or discussion. Okay, and then I would entertain a motion.
To the Chair.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Okay. Okay, a, a motion by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Ziegemeyer. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, any opposed? There being none, the motion carries. Thank you.
Approval of a deed of trust, loan agreement and loan note with Richland Village LP to defer certain county impact fees for the construction of permanent supportive affordable rental housing in an amount not to exceed $344,354 over a term of 55 years. Authorization for the chair to sign the loan documents and authorization for the county administrator or county council to make immaterial minor changes to the loan documents prior to signing and recording, if necessary.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, this is a great item, I think, something the county and the regional housing authority can be very proud of. Back in February of 2021, the board adopted a resolution approving commitment to an agreement with the regional housing authority to provide a loan to the Richland Village Apartments Project in the amount of $453,552 to defer development impact fee funds. And so this project thankfully is, is coming to be. It will provide 133 units. It's located on Bernard Drive in Yuba City. It's over about 4.7 acres. There will be 66 one-bedroom units, 32-bedroom units, and 37 three-bedroom units in six three-story buildings. The project also includes a two-story community building with a large meeting room, site manager's unit, staff offices, a computer area, restrooms, maintenance, and utility spaces, a laundry room, an outdoor patio, and recreation areas. So, and just to summary here, as mentioned in the staff report, the Richland Village site is located approximately a quarter mile from a bus route with service projected to be every 30 minutes during peak hours. It's a, a great location. The, the county had a similar agreement with regional housing for the veterans and homeless housing at New Haven Court, I believe that's the title of that. So that was 41 units, this is considerably bigger. There's also staff available from Regional Housing Authority to address any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion or questions. Boy, we are quiet today, aren't we? I think this is a great project. Thank you for the presentation on that. And so I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve, staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a first by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Ziegemeyer, and then I'll ask for a roll call vote, please, on this.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Okay, ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you very much. And do you have any other follow-up announcements or anything else that you'd like to discuss?
Yes, thank you, I'll just keep talking. So I have...
Well, we missed you, by the way, welcome back.
Oh, thank you.
We're surprised you're not speaking French, too.
Well, yeah, and Bill just mentioned Laura did a much better job than... Which, which I do not doubt, so.
You did great, yes.
Thank you. So, one, we have some new employees that I wanted to recognize. One, we have with us today, James Stevens. He's the new Assistant Director of Development Services. We're really happy to have him onboard. That's been a position we've been recruiting for on and off for quite a while and feel really lucky to land James, someone with his great experience, who's worked in a couple other counties as well. So I just wanted to say welcome to James.
Welcome, James, that's good man. James, I hate to put you on the spot. Can you say a couple of words, just, you know? Tell us, tell us how great we are, or something. No, but we'd love to say a few words. He doesn't know yet, but I'm just kidding. But we'd just like to hear a few words from our new folks. You have to turn your mic on, there, thank you.
First, I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak to the audience today. Secondly, I'd like to thank Neil Hay for hiring me. But no, as was mentioned, I've worked with several other counties and jurisdictions in the area, Butte County, Plumas County, all the way down the state of California, about 20 years of community development, development services experience. So I'm excited about serving the community, moving forward with board directives, and just kind of being a part of the team, helping the county grow.
That's awesome, we're happy to have you onboard, thank you.
Thanks, James. Also, we have Jake Abbott, who's with the CAO's office. He's our new Public Information Officer and spent several years with the Appeal Democrats. And I don't want to ruin it if you're going to ask him to say a few words, so maybe...
Definitely, let's have Jake come on up, all right, Jake? Welcome, Jake.
Thank you. Yeah, grew up out in Sutter. Spent about four or five years over at the Appeal Democrat and most recently was at the Sacramento Business Journal. So really happy to join Sutter County and help you guys tell, tell the story of, of the, of the county and get the word out on all the great things you're doing. So I appreciate the board for letting me speak and I look forward to working with you.
Great, we're happy to have you onboard, yeah.
Thanks, Jake. It's been tough about a year without a PIO so far, so it's, it's great.
Yeah, it's great to have, have a PIO. All these people started while you were gone, what the heck?
No, I came back and then they started.
Oh, I, I see, yeah.
So, thank you. And then also Matt Robertson, Deputy County Administrator, most recently with Yolo County as a financial analyst. Maybe he'd want to say a few...
Come on up, Matt, yeah. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm excited to, to start with Sutter County. I actually started in Virginia, so I worked a couple local governments there, mostly in budget management, most recently with the county of Yolo, also in the Planning Division, which is their, their budget office. Really excited to be a part of the team throughout my interview process. I think that's what really made Sutter County stand out, was the team that you have. So I'm really excited to start along with Jake and James. We'll, we'll all contribute to the team altogether. So, yeah, appreciate the opportunity and definitely know that my doors open anytime that you need me. Happy to work for the county.
Great, thank you, welcome aboard.
Thank you, so they all started yesterday, so it was a good day. And then just quickly, as Rick Bingham mentioned, there's the Bridging Hope event at 9:00 AM on Saturday, the 20th, so not this week, but next, at, at the Yuba County Government Center. Is this the third, third one, right? Yeah, it was good participating in the other two, and supervisors were there and from both sides of the river, so it was a great event. Also, Thursday, this Thursday on 9/11, there's the Recovery Happens picnic this year in Marysville at, on Bryant Field from 10 to 2. And it is a celebration of recovery from substance use and mental health disorders. And food is provided, so please, if you're available, come out and join us. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve, appreciate it. I'll bring it back to the board for district reports. And today, we'll start with Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Well, great things happening in high school football. Our Sutter Huskies are 3-0. We took on a great program. Douglas of Mindon, Nevada, came into town Friday night. All three levels played. Freshman team lost 16 to 15. The JV team won 7 to 6. And the varsity team won 46 to 21. So it was a close game, because this, like I said, I think these are the first three touchdowns put on Sutter this year. So they were a great program. That score doesn't indicate how bad the program is. They were good, it was close. It was a great game, fun football to watch. I'm looking forward to the rest of the seasons. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you Supervisor, Supervisor Stevens?
So I've only known Gina's smiling face on the hallway there taking pictures, so I, I didn't see her today taking the picture. So I'll miss that smiling face when she's taking our picture. But I appreciate that and I appreciate Laura this last two weeks being acting CAO, thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you Supervisor Stevens. And Supervisor Baines?
Yes, I'd like to ask our CAO, CAO Smith to look into having a supervisor appointed to the E-Center board as we have our other committee assignments. If you please look into that, that's all.
Thank you Supervisor Baines. Couple of things I...
My apologies, if I, if I may. Supervisor Stevens, you have an event Thursday you might want to mention, right?
Yes, if, if anyone's interested, 6:30 tomorrow evening down at, what's the golf course? Yeah, the Nicholas Golf Course, what's it called? River Oaks, yes, River Oaks. At 6:30 tomorrow, we're going to be having a town hall, so we'd love to have anybody come down.
Somebody mentioned ice cream. Is there going to be ice cream and cookies or something?
Well, no pie for Tony, though. It's called Cookies and Cream, so, yeah, we're going to have cookies and ice cream.
Excellent, okay. All right, thank you Supervisor Stevens, anything else? Steve, okay. A couple of requests, requests for recognition, request for, a plaque recognizing Mark Orm. Mark worked for Butte Water District for 39 years and was general manager for 30 years. He's retiring on September 30th, 2025. And then a recognition or a thank you letter from the full board to Miles Perry for the donation of two 3D printers to the library. So we can add those, Madam Clerk, appreciate that. I want to mention a couple of things. First, I went to a dinner last week for Say Love. It was a great, a great event outdoors, and it was held in Marysville. But, you know, the organization that Supervisor Stevens is the president of is Say Love, and it just does it really great for the community, great things for the community. And it was great to celebrate those achievements during that, that dinner. We had a really good turnout, so I know you had great people planning it all for you, but it turned out wonderful. And then I want to mention that in the second district, the heart of Sutter County, we have a taco festival happening this Saturday. So anybody who would like to join us, it's going to be at the fairgrounds. And I believe it starts at noon, I want to say, but right around noon. So it's going to be all day long and pretty exciting. It's always, it's always a big event. And this, this year, it's at, it's at the fairgrounds, and it'll, it'll be well-attended. And that's actually all I have for now. So other than that, meeting is adjourned.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion? Motion? Oh, and we have a closed session. So, okay, never mind. Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion carries. We have a closed session?
Yes.
I got it this time.
Conference of legal counsel, existing litigation. Case name Elizabeth May v. County of Sutter et al. Case Sutter County Superior Court, case number CVC S21-0000996, pursuant to government code Section 549, 56.9 D1.
Great, thank you, and meeting adjourned. Enjoy the rest of your afternoon.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumus Lake Self-Storage in Plumus Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.